Good morning and welcome back to the committee, the whole meeting. We just finished a long in-camera session, so we are back to the public portion of this meeting. And I believe, I think Counsel Montgomery, your hand is up.
Yeah, I have a motion ready, your worship.
Your worship, I have, I already asked to speak to this matter.
Oh, I have a motion ready, so, thank you. I will move the council, the council court of conduct and recommendations.
Point of order, I believe Counsel Sobel had said he was ready?
I believe you had given me permission to speak. I'm just ready with my motion.
Point of order.
Mr. Legor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there is no motion on the floor yet, so there's no ability to speak to anything. You need to have a motion on the floor before you can speak to it.
Yeah, I'll be continuing that if I may.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, I think according to Q, you have Counsel Sobel and Counsel Montgomery ready to put motions on the floor.
I believe I was called on first, Mr. Legor.
I did, I'm gonna have to say I did call on Counsel Montgomery officially. As soon as we came in, I saw his hand up, so go ahead and remake your motion.
Thank you very much. I move that the Council Court of Conduct complaint review and recommendations report presented by Strategic Steps Incorporated be accepted by council and be released publicly once necessary redactions pursuant to the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act are completed by administration and subject to council review. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And now that we have the motion on the floor, is there discussion on that? So just for clarification, are you making a motion to accept the entirety of the report, then? Sounded like it.
Yeah, I believe that's the point of my motion, yeah.
Thank you. So we have that motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on that? Counsel Peterson?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, go ahead, sorry.
Counsel Peterson?
Can I just have the motion read again, your worship?
Yes, that would be probably good for all of us.
Mm-hmm. I move that the Council Court of Conduct complaint review and recommendations report presented by Strategic Steps Incorporated be accepted by council and be released publicly once necessary redactions pursuant to the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act are completed by administration and subject to council review.
So, your worship, if I could just have clarification what that last statement means?
That just means it has to come back to council for review before it's published.
I'm asking administration what that might mean.
The, under council review? After council review?
Yes, your worship. Subject to council review, what does, what does that mean?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would take it that council is gonna review this report at some future time, and they will instruct administration as to when to bring it back to council for that further review.
So, so just for clarification, your worship?
I can, I can speak to the intent of my motion if you like.
Yes.
Just for clarification, your worship, then what we're talking about is that the report will be released in its, once the redactions have been over, gone over by administration and by communications, and then we can determine what under, under our bylaw needs to be redacted, and then at that point, if the report would be released to the public with full transparency in its entirety. Is that what I am understanding to administration, your worship?
Mr. Legor and then Counsel Montgomery.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the report will be redacted and, and released to the public. If council wants it to come back to council for a review prior to release to public, then please direct us to do so.
That is the intent of my motion, that it be redacted by administration and then brought back to council before it's released, so that we can review it and ensure that we are happy with what's been redacted, and then it can be released after council reviewed it. That's my motion.
So, so are you saying, Counsel Montgomery, that you would decide on what should be redacted, or that you would take under advisement through the bylaws and policies under administration what should be redacted?
I'm leaving it up to administration to redact what they feel is, is right to redact, and then it be brought back to council to review and approve, and then it can be released if council chooses to release it with those redactions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Legor.
Could I recommend that you amend your motion, Counsel Montgomery, to where you say with council review, that the redacted report be brought back to council for further review prior to release?
So I guess, like, would you like me to just add, like, before release onto the end of my motion?
Could the CIL please read that again, your worship, that suggestion?
And that the report be brought back, the redacted report be brought back to council for further review prior to release to the public?
Okay, so I can read my entire motion again if you like. So it's, I move that counts, that the Council Court of Conduct complaint review and recommendations report presented by Strategic Steps Incorporated be accepted by council and be released publicly once necessary redactions pursuant to the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act are completed by administration and then brought back for review by council prior to release.
Thank you, your worship, that does, that does help me. My, my, my concern is that the intent of the motion be stated and not to, not to lessen the transparency that, that I'm striving for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And I have a text here from Counsel Bauer who says, I don't know about the appropriateness now of this, since it came from in-camera to public, but she is in favor of that motion as well. She stepped out, but she will be back momentarily. Counselor Sobel.
Thank you, your worship. I have a subsequent motion that deals with this report, that I would move that Counsel Peterson issue an appropriate public apology in regards to the results of the Strategic Steps Inc. Code of Conduct investigation.
Thank you for that motion. We have a motion on the floor concerning that report. Is there discussion? Counsel Peterson, Counsel Montgomery following?
Your worship, can I make the apology now?
We should probably see if the motion carries. Counselor?
Yes, the motion.
Counselor Montgomery, then Deputy Mayor Cox.
So I guess, I guess I'm just wondering if, if, what, what will happen if, let's say Counsel Peterson tries to minimize, you know, the, let's say, the, the results of the report and doesn't actually speak to the findings of the allegations, what, what is, will happen at that point?
I don't wanna put words in Counsel Sobel's mouth who made the motion. Counselor Sobel, did you wanna speak to your motion at all for clarification?
Your worship, having known Counsel Peterson and having discussed this matter fairly intently for some time, I'm confident that she will make an extremely appropriate comment in this regard, and, and I, I'm concerned that we would be going down this road, to be honest with you, your worship.
Thank you. So we do have recommendations from Strategic Steps Incorporated, who, who were the third party brought in on the investigation of this matter. So I'll go to Deputy Mayor Cox and then Counsel Corbial.
Your worship, is it appropriate for the, this to happen now when we haven't released the report? I, I don't understand why we would be doing anything with respect to the report the public aren't gonna understand. It has not been released. I, I don't believe this is the, the time for this. I believe at the same time that the report is, is released would be the time that anything coming from that report should be done. That would be the transparency. It doesn't make sense for her, Counsel Peterson, to do anything now when the public doesn't know what's happened.
Well, let me turn to administration. Have, are there situations in the past where we've approved something before a report is made public? Either in building or planning or?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Mayor. We'll redact this report, we'll bring it back to council, they can view it from a redaction point of view, and then it'll be released to the public. In the meantime, Counsel Peterson can draft her apology and present it to council and to the public, and hopefully we can then move forward. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have that motion on the floor from Counsel Sobel, but I have Counsel Corbial next, and then Counsel Peterson. Counsel Corbial?
Terry said exactly what I was willing to say.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Peterson?
You know, the only thing that I was going to say is that, that, you know, I have no problem waiting, but I also don't think that there's any problem with bringing forward the formal complaint and, and the recommendation from Strategic Steps on, under 8.2 on page 26, and then doing this apology, your worship. This is hung over, over my head for seven months and over this council, and so I think that we're in public now. I would, I would, would be my preference to proceed with Counsel Sobel's motion and do the apology, and, and then make the report public in, in all of its comprehensive compilation. It's not going to change the, the outcome otherwise. The, the report, what I'm saying, your worship, is the report is the report, and I think that the findings of the report are the findings of the report. That's not going to change, is it? And so I see nothing, nothing wrong with doing the apology now, your worship, and if Counsel Sobel's motion passes, it would be my heartfelt wish to just do it. I don't need to prepare it. I would just do it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cox?
Your worship, I, I get what Counsel Peterson is saying. I'm just, we aren't being, we aren't being transparent in the sense that the report isn't gonna change, but it is because the public haven't seen it. So they're not gonna understand what's going on without the report. So I just, I, I, I think the timing is wrong, but I do understand that Counsel Peterson wants to move forward, but I can't support that motion.
I guess we, we sometimes do make decisions where we have more information than the public would have, so that is one of the things council tends to do. We get, we get more information than the public sometimes gets at the time. But we have a motion on the floor, I guess you can?
Your worship, you know, maybe, maybe for the, for my clarity, 'cause I, I don't, I'm okay either way, but maybe for my clarity, I would, I would really appreciate, and for the public's sake, I'd appreciate for them to hear from the investigator on this, and, and I think it would be, would be useful just in terms of process, if, if that's appropriate.
Thank you. Counsel?
Point of order, I don't think that's appropriate since the report hasn't been released, and maybe if, if Counsel Peterson would like to have the investigator come back once the report is released, then the investigator could come back and, and speak to the contents of the report.
I'm not asking on?
And I agree with Counselor Corbial and Counselor Cox that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be appropriate for Counsel Peterson to apologize until the report has come out.
Yeah, I was just, I was not asking about commenting on the report itself, your worship, I was asking on commenting on the motion. But I'm okay either way. I'm all right to go for a week out, it's fine. My only concern, your worship, is that, that at this point, you know, we're trying to move this council forward, and we're going to wind up with, we have another complaint issue before us, and, and it's not helpful. And so, you know, if we could, my, my preference would be to just release the report redacted and do this, but I understand council's wish.
Counsel Corbial, I, I think you had a, an idea that you wanted to share. I thought I saw your hand up. Maybe I'm wrong.
My, no, I, I didn't have my hand up. I, I do agree it should just be all in one. I understand why we want to move on, but a week is a week, as long as that's okay with administration. I would like to move on and get this over with. What is administration?
So is, I guess we're looking at possibly tabling this to the May 19th meeting? You're not? I thought you guys wanted more time.
We can make the vote, but the apology doesn't come until the report's released, right? That's my understanding.
So Counsel Sobel, do you still want your motion to stay on the floor?
I'm sorry, are you talking to me, your worship?
Yes, are you still?
Yes, I, I don't see anything wrong with the, with, with, with the motion, and I have to be honest with you, I, I think, I think bringing the report back and having that coincide with the apology might be more appropriate, but I, I would like to keep the motion on the table as is.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cox?
Your worship, can we just, at the friendly amendment, that, that the motion stands at the, and that she make the apology at the time that the report is released? So can we just have that as a friendly amendment? Then it's not tabled, it is coming, it's just when that report is released.
I will turn to the mover of the motion.
Well, I would, I, I guess, I, I don't have a big problem with it, but I, I, I'd like to know from, hear from Counsel Peterson as to her thoughts on that, or is that, is that required?
I don't believe we need to know exactly. She's already expressed an opinion that she could wait longer as well, so unless?
My dilemma, if I might speak to the dilemma.
Sure.
The investigator has pointed out that it's, that there will be some members of this council who won't be happy with the recommendations. I think that some clarity is going to be required around exactly what the report from the recommendations are asking me to do. I think that I'm very clear on that. I think the investigator has also made it very clear, but I don't think the council is clear. So I think that, that then the motion is, is subject to interpretation and subject to some processes that might not coincide or might not align with the recommendations of the investigator. And I, I would really like help from the investigator and from administration to know how, how we can make sure that the report is the report and that the recommendations are the recommendations, and that that's what we understand, that we are, are here. And, you know, I understand that, I have a lot of familiarity with investigations around code of conduct, and I understand how they work, but I don't think that that's the understanding of at least two members of this council. And so I, I really am, am at a loss, your worship, as to, as to moving forward on this, because I, I think that, that there isn't clarity. And I, and I really do ask respectfully for, for consideration and clarity around this before this motion comes forward.
Well, one of the things that I would, I would say is, the seven of us are fully versed in the entire issue. We have, we have had the report, we have gone through it numerous times, we've discussed it for a long period of time, so we're fully aware of the report. We're fully aware of the report's recommendations. So I'm not sure, in my view, that we need to necessarily wait till the public sees the report. They could see the report as well and, and then read why we might have made the decision we did. But I do wanna ask Ian, is this, is this a typical thing, Ian? In your past presentations to other town councils, have you been asked to clarify and speak to the issues that are, that are being mentioned right now?
No, not often. Although, that said, we often do the presentation that we did in camera today in an open session, so people who are interested can find out. It is uncommon that we would, we would, like, almost take ownership back on something like this. Once council has made a motion to accept or receive the report, we transfer ownership. We can certainly provide comment, but it's not terribly common that we would actually kind of redo the rationale behind it. The idea behind the report is it's supposed to be comprehensive enough that it would stand that way by itself. That said, if it's council's will, we can certainly adapt.
So your question for clarification, may I just ask Ian a question?
Yes.
So when you, when you do your investigation, and in the comprehensiveness of your report, when you bring forward a rec, the, in the recommendations, the, the consideration around the formal complaint and the actions that would follow, that is generally what, what is acceptable then? So they follow, and I, I would just ask, that, that is what's generally acceptable.
Mr. Mayor, that is typically it. I, to leave the report as a standalone, that much of what we have seen through this entire process as examples seems to be a matter of perception, and that seems to be continuing to this point as well, that different people have different perspectives, different perspectives on what we've written here in digital black and white, anyway.
Thank you. Counsel Corbial, then Counsel Bauer?
Thank you, worship. With light of that, then, maybe we do need to reflect. Maybe we do need to go back and read through and table this till, until the next council meeting. I'm not sure, I don't know, like I said, I've said before, I would rather it come out at the same time, but, but it, but it is what it is. Like I say, if we're, if we're kind of all over the map with what this is exactly meaning, maybe we do need to go back and reflect.
Thank you. Counsel Bauer?
Thank you, worship. I apologize for my momentary absence. I would like to ask, please, that the motion that we are about to vote on would be publicly read again, in case I missed it, and then I'd also like to ask Counsel Peterson who she's referencing when she's saying, the two counselors. And then in addition to that, I would just like to say that it's been practiced by this council that we apologize to each other, whether or not be, that be publicly, by email or in person, in camera or out of camera. I, I think that it's pretty, like, I'm pretty, I'm not out of line in saying that asking for a public apology is, is not asking for a stretch in this instance. We have been pretty accountable to the public and pretty accountable for our own behavior. So I would, and I don't at any point think that any of those apologies were inappropriate, and I wouldn't think that an apology to the public or to the community would be inappropriate in this sense either. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Montgomery?
Well, I, first of all, I just, to Counsel Bauer's point, if Counsel Sobel could just restate the motion, and then I have something to follow up with, I guess.
On behalf of you, I'd move that counsel, Counsel Peterson issue an appropriate, I'm sorry, I move that Counsel Peterson issue a public apology in regards to the results of the Strategic Steps Inc. Code of Conduct investigation.
Okay. And, and as I said before, you know, I, well, so first of all, you know, I appreciate that Counsel Peterson is willing to apologize, that, you know, that, that says a lot anyways. But, and I agree with what the other, you know, what Counselor Corbial and Counselor Cox have said about, this would be better to come with the, the release of the report, and, and I, and I think, you know, with time to reflect as well, I agree with Counselor Corbial's point as well, as well about time to reflect, and, and even to digest, 'cause there was obviously more recommendations besides just a public apology made by the, the investigator, and, and so I think it's worth, you know, reflecting on, on other possible avenues as well. Thank you.
Well, I would just like to add that the, the Strategic Steps has indicated their two recommendations to us, and the public will see that when this report is released. So we have, I believe we have enough information. I guess it comes down to whether we're going to follow the intent or the direction or the recommendation of Strategic Steps, or we're going to discuss, argue as to what an apology might look like, and I?
With that, your worship, call the question.
Yep, I think everyone's had a chance to speak twice, so we have a motion on the floor, and I will call the motion. All in favor of the motion on the floor? We have five in favor and two opposed. Thank you very much. And then if I can turn to administration, so having had this motion come forward, we still are expecting some redactions and the, the report to come back to us before it gets released to the public?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. We'll bring that back to you as quick as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope this, I hope this goes a long way as far as demonstrating to the public that we can work through these situations. This has been a very difficult year and a half, and I know the public expects us to do the work of the town, and I've been trying to do things in the background. Sometimes things work and sometimes they don't, but I think this council still needs to work for the benefit of the community, and we have five more months left in our term before the election, so I'm sure every one of us agrees that we need to work hard for the rest of our term for the people in this community. And I believe that completes this item, does it not? We can move on to that? No? Counsel, Counsel, so, I have Counsel Bauer and then Counsel Peterson.
Thank you, your worship. I would just like to ask, please, if I could make one final motion, and I would just like to bring attention to the fact that there were also other recommendations from Strategic Steps under documentation, and I would like to move that administration bring back to council some action on 8.7, items number 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, for council to be able to go over and include in future bylaws and the respectful workplace policies. So I'm asking this because I do not want these recommendations to be lost. It says that we should include emphasis on respectful workplace policies as part of the orientation for the 2021 to 2025 Town Council. It also recognizes that the social media policy should be clear for all members of Town Council, and that we should read perhaps a section that council members representing the town via personal or town social media accounts are expected to connect themselves at all times as representatives of the town in accordance with the code, Council Code of Conduct bylaw. It also talks about the council, the town's procedure bylaw and code of conduct, that it be updated so that in-camera meetings may not be recorded and that material may not be removed from the in-camera meeting. It also says that section 13.8 of the Code of Conduct bylaw used prior to the use of formal processes. And finally, the last two are that council consider modification to occur its current council code of conduct bylaw to highlight the informal complaint process, section 13.8 A B by making it a standalone section. And lastly, that council modify and update the town's respectful workplace policy, policy 1301, to account for, to manage alleged contravention, contraventions by members of council. And I believe that in the future, this would help future councils. Thank you.
Thank you, and if I could just add on that, does, does the respectful workplace also take into account the, the chief administrative officer and the relationship with counselors?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the respectful workplace policy applies to all employees of the community, or of the town, sorry, and I would ask that council pass a motion directing administration to bring a report to. And I would ask that council pass a motion directing administration to bring a report to council addressing all of the recommendations. And we can't, uh, respond on the direction from one counselor. We need to have a motion from council, please. Thank you.
So would you need that as a second motion then? Or can Counselor Bauer add that to her motion?
She doesn't have a motion on the floor yet, Mr. Mayor. She was just speaking what she would like.
Okay.
She wants to move it if she wants it, and it should address all recommendations. Thank you.
Counselor Bauer, did you pu- I thought you did put a motion on the floor.
I believe I did. I, uh, I included items eight point seven, numbers twelve to seventeen, and I asked that administration bring a report back to council. However, I did not those exact words. Thank you.
Would you be amenable to adding, uh, a section at the end to ask that administration, uh, bring back a report to us on your, uh, request?
Absolutely, your worship.
Do you have that as far as an amendment? Would you mind doing your whole motion, uh, Counselor Bauer? Deborah is trying to get it all and then, and then once the motion's on the floor, if we have discussion on that motion, we can. And then I'll come back to Counselor Peterson who had something to say just before your motion. So Counselor Bauer, if you're able to craft this.
Thank you, worship. I asked that, uh, council asked administration to draft a report that includes revisions to the social media policy Code of Council Conduct bylaw and the town's respectful workplace policy that take into account documentation from Strategic Steps Report, items eight point seven, sub-sections twelve to seventeen, please.
Did you want to add that report at the end?
And that a report presented to council. Thank you.
A request to, uh, have administration bring back a report on those aspects to council. Is that better, Deborah? Okay, Deborah has got that now. So now that we have that motion on the floor, Counselor Peterson, did you want to speak to that motion or something else after?
Uh, something else after, your worship, yeah.
Thank you. So to the motion that's on the floor from Counselor Bauer, is there further discussion on her motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion put forward by Counselor Bauer? And that motion is carried? And then, uh, now Counselor Peterson, you had something you wanted to say before Counselor Bauer made her motion?
Well, while it was just in the process of the motion, your worship, because, you know, Counselor Bauer referenced a, a lot of things in the report, in a report that has not yet been released. And so there were, she, she just identified all kinds of things in that report. And I, I really don't have a problem with that at all. But what I just wanted to say then with regards to her motion and the one that Counselor Sobel said, for the sake of the public that's watching this meeting and for clarity, I would also like to add that as a part of this report, that one of the recommendations was with regards to the, to the, um, to the breach of, of the Code of Conduct, um, that, that with the recommendation was that Town Council apply a minimum sanction to myself for a minor breach of the Code, uh, Council Code of Conduct bylaw. So I just, I just want to make that evident because otherwise with all the information that's now been released, this will be extremely confusing to the public and, uh, that is watching today. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. So I believe this concludes that aspect and we wait to hear back from administration uh, as far as the redacted, um, aspects of the report. Uh, Ian and your group from Strategic Steps Incorporated, uh, thank you for your work. Thank you for being here today to ask, answer some of those questions that were posed to you in camera and being able to speak to the report.
Thank you, your worship.
I have one final question, your worship. On the, on the, um, advice of administration, and I would leave it to them, uh, in case there is, uh, further ness- uh, necessity of providing clarification on the report, it'd be really great if Strategic Steps could make themselves available for when this comes back in case, uh, council has questions.
Does that make sense, Mr. Legore, that when you bring your report to us, if you feel that Strategic Steps might be needed, they could be available, you could coordinate with them?
We certainly can, Mr. Mayor. I don't see any need for it though. And remember, there will be a cost to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bauer.
I, um, I just would like to say, your worship, that, uh, if I was out of line by quoting the documentation under eight point seven, I do apologize. However, I was under the impression that we had voted to make this document public. Um, just a question for administration. Was that a conflict that I read the parts of the documentation?
I think Counselor Bauer is wondering that she referenced those points as far as a motion for you folks to bring those items to us, um, regarding social media and things like that. Has she run, has she done something that could be problematic since the report itself has not been made public?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, she has not created any problems for administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bauer, that's good. Okay, so I believe now we can move on, I'm thinking. So that brings us to item five point one, adoption of the April fourteenth, twenty twenty one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, which is on page one ninety-eight of your agenda package. And I'm looking for, Counselor Peterson?
I would, I would still move those minutes, your worship.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to adopt the April fourteenth, twenty twenty one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Now call the question, all in favor? And that motion is carried. Uh, we have no unfinished business. We have no table item reports. And that brings us to eight items and reports, items or reports from administration, eight point one, Community Garden. And I believe, Donna, you're speaking to this. Welcome. And I believe it's afternoon now, so good afternoon, Donna. And welcome.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. Uh, I'm here to report about a community garden. Uh, Communities in Bloom successfully obtained funding for a Community Choose Well grant, which the town of Strathmore supported for a community garden project. The value of the grant is five thousand dollars. I'm also happy to report that, uh, they have obtained an additional five thousand dollars in funding for the community garden. This will definitely help offset, um, lumber costs, which is quite expensive right now. The garden will consist of six raised garden beds and it will allow for a space for community groups and organizations to collaborate and provide hands-on programming in an outdoor setting. The community garden beds are to be located in the green space beside the Strathmore Municipal Library where the bocce courts once were. And there is a little map included of the location. Administration would like to relocate and build proper bocce courts in a different location in the near future. And I do have a couple of different ideas of where those could go, a nice central location. Communities in Bloom has been collaborating, collaborating with groups that have included the Happy Game, the Strathmore Municipal Library, and Strathmore F C S S. Any additional interested community groups or organizations would be welcome to participate. The gardens will also be accessible to the entire community to help tend and care for. Programming or garden maintenance would be focused on opportunities for mental and physical health, gardening skills, intergenerational learning, cultural and indigenous knowledge sharing, and environmental stewardship. Additionally, during COVID nineteen-
Sorry, Donna, could I stop you for one second?
Absolutely.
Administration, I believe I neglected to call a motion to go into committee of the whole. Is that, uh, is that a procedural thing we should do? Thank you for that. Thank you, Counselor Corbield. Are you prepared to make that motion?
I've moved the whole.
You've saved me once again, Counselor Corbield. You should get another badge. All right, we have a motion from Counselor Corbield to go into committee of the whole. All in favor? And that motion is carried. And Counselor Corbield, I'll create a badge and I'll be sending it to you. Sorry, no, you do not need to start again, Donna. We're just, it's just a procedural thing. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Additionally, during COVID nineteen, the community garden space is a collaborative area that can be effective for safe programming for all age groups. The gardens are a tool to reduce social isolation and offer an accessible space for seniors, youth, and those of all ages and abilities. Communities in Bloom, in partnership with the town's indigenous liaison, is looking to designate garden beds for a traditional indigenous vegetable garden to offer cul- cultural learning and healing opportunities for all community members. The, the location that we have chosen for the, the community garden, um, as many of you may be aware, in the past, uh, CPR would plant demonstration gardens at train stations uh, that consisted of annuals and vegetables. These gardens demonstrated to settlers that the, the soil was fertile and that the, the west was a great place to call home. And this encouraged them to stay in these locations. So this location that we have picked is where the train station, uh, used to be. So the project named Station Community Gardens will celebrate the rich history and agriculture and involvement of the Canadian Pacific Railway in Strathmore.
Thank you very much for your report and your presentation. Do we have questions for Donna or comments for her following her presentation on this? I, you know, I've asked this before, but if you could maybe talk to them and sneak a mayor's cannabis plant into, into that garden, that would be-
We will work that in one day.
Part of a healing thing, I think it could be. Uh, no questions or comments for, for, from counselors? Then seeing none, uh, thank you for your report. And, um, I guess we'll have to rise and report afterwards to receive it as information, or we don't have to. See? You've come to my rescue too. Thank you, Donna. I really appreciate it. And that brings us to item eight point two, F C S S Program Update. And, uh, we have Melissa joining us today and Catherine is in the, in the, in the crowd of our gallery. Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Melissa Moss and I am the Community Support Coordinator with the F C S S Department. I am here today to provide council with a brief summary of three key projects that F C S S has undertaken over the last year. This includes the two thousand and twenty Housing and Service Provision Estimate, estimation report, Reaching Home Funded Activities, and the Keep in Touch Program. All of these programs have been funded fully or in part by external grant funding focused on resiliency during COVID nineteen. The first project is the two thousand and twenty Housing and Service Provision Estimation Project in partnership with the Rural Development Network. Strathmore was one of twenty-four rural communities to participate in a coordinated housing and service needs estimation effort. This was a quantitative and qualitative research study conducted over a thirty-day period through November and December two thousand and twenty. Data was collected using surveys in partnerships with local service organizations. This was our community's second time participating in this estimation project with the pilot project completed in two thousand and eighteen. A copy of the final two thousand and twenty report was attached for council's information, which was created by the Rural Development Network. Highlights of the report include, half of the respondents were found to be living in situations defined as homeless or housing insecure. This includes a twenty-eight point six percent of senior respondents and eighty-four point six of indigenous respondents. The most common factors affecting respondents' current living situation were lack of money, unaffordable rent or mortgage, mental health struggles, medical conditions, and job loss. The community and provincial report will be accessible to all on the Rural Development Network's website. We would like to take a moment to acknowledge and thank all of the partner organizations that were creatively to collect survey data amidst, amidst public health restrictions to make this project a success. The second program I would like to present to council today is a collection of multiple supports F C S S was able to put in place focused on prevention and support for those facing homelessness and housing instability during COVID nineteen. Funding for the programs were provided in partnership with the Rural Development Network and Government of Canada's Reaching Home Funding. F C S S was able to provide expanded service delivery including case management services, an ID clinic, transportation assistance, community training, food security, harm reduction, and an indigenous engagement program. Funding supported programming from April first, two thousand and twenty to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. F C S S assisted over two hundred and forty families with diverse service and supports. Eighteen families were housed, including nine dependents. Clients were housed in an average of thirteen days from intake. Twenty-nine pieces of government ID were provided at no cost. Training was provided to local organizations with a focus on increasing the skills and knowledge of rural volunteers to support vulnerable community members. And finally, our indigenous liaison provided cultural gifts and resources to local organizations to increase dialogue about culturally relevant supports. Increasing F C S S's capacity through services like case management and basic need supports has required tremendous growth, flexibility, and compassion from our entire team over the last fourteen months. I would like to acknowledge the hard work and dedication. The final program I would like to introduce to council today is called Keep in Touch. Strathmore F C S S and Wheatland F C S S have partnered with the support of volunteer lethbridge to bring the Keep in Touch program to our community to reduce social isolation of seniors and vulnerable residents. It is a volunteer-based program that offers friendly companionship via telephone calls to isolated residents. The program promotes a sense of purpose for both volunteers and participants, mental wellness, and improved access to community supports and resources. Volunteers will be provided training and ongoing support. The F C S S offices will be able to offer additional supports to participants if needs are identified through the program. Both F C S S offices plan to roll this program out during Seniors Week, which begins on June seventh. We will be seeking both seniors that would be like, that would like added connection as well as volunteers that would be interested in connecting with their community members.
Thank you very much for your report, your presentation. Uh, counselors, questions or comments for Melissa? Uh, Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, worship. I, I just want to pass on my congratulations and thanks to, um, um, Melissa Moss and F C S S for the work that they've done, uh, with the Rural Development Network. I cannot, um, say enough about the work that they've done in collecting this data. It's so critical not, not just to F C S S and, but also to other groups within the community who are dependent upon this data to be able to continue to serve the needs of the, of the, uh, underserved in our community or the marginalized persons in our community. And F C S S has done just a remarkable job in, um, in doing this. I also want to say that in, in, um, in the work that the, the volunteers are doing at the, um, at the overnight shelter, if it wasn't for the, the support and the safety net provided by the Family and Community Support Services, uh, we, we just wouldn't be anywhere near as far along as we have been. And we've, uh, that organization has received accolades from the Rural Development Network and they're, they're directly connected to the work that's being done by the F C S S. And in addition to the work that F C S S has done in housing those eighteen families, the overnight shelter has been able to house an additional twenty. And it is in, in relationship to the work that they're doing. I, I have said before that this is, um, the most responsive F C S S I've ever seen. And I, I sat on an F C S S board for more than a decade. This is the most responsive F C S S community that I've ever witnessed in, in our, um, in our area. And I am indebted to them. And, uh, our community owes them a great debt of thanks for the work that they're doing. And, and I can't tell you how much I personally appreciate it. And I appreciate it from a council perspective as well. Good work.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Any other comments from counselors at home? Seeing none, I guess we'll be accepting this information in the public portion? No, we don't have to. Okay, I'm kind of, I'm kind of, yeah, thanks. And thank you again for your report and your presenting today. And good job. Okay, that brings us to... Sorry, that brings us to, uh, urgent business. I don't believe we- Sorry, that brings us to urgent business. I don't believe we have any. Do we have any administrative inquiries today? No? Then at this point, I'm looking for a motion to come out of committee of the whole. Counselor Sobel?
I so move, your worship, come out of committee of the whole.
We have a motion to come out of committee of the whole at twelve twenty-five. All in favor? And that's carried, and then a motion to adjourn. Thank you. We have a motion from Counselor Montgomery to adjourn at twelve twenty-five. All in favor? And the motion is carried.